Let's call the meeting to order.
Excuse me.
Welcome to the city of Marshalltown at our City Hall Council Chambers. Today's date is July 9, 2018, and the time is 5:30 PM. Notice to the public, the mayor and council welcome comment from the public during discussion of any agenda items. If you will step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit your time to have remarks of about three minutes or less so that others may be given the opportunity to speak. The speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and council and not to any specific council member. And it's in the discretion of the mayor and the city council to respond to questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, I invite those who are able to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen, brother. Amen, brother. Let's do their shoes off.
Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Isom?
Here.
Lamer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Weren?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Gowdy?
Here.
Coop?
Here.
Let's go to item E, which is time for the mayor, council, and administrator comments. And I know that at least one consular has some comments.
I would like to ask us all to keep in mind that I received a text today that Steve Sincox, our water superintendent, is in Iowa Methodist in the IECU unit in critical condition. And his son says, "I just wish he'd wake up." So let's keep Steve and his family in our prayers.
Wow, I had not heard that. Thank you, Mr. Lamer. Actually, why don't we take a minute of silence to think about Steve and pray for him? I'm told that actually works. Thank you. I wasn't counting for the minute. Any other comments by consuls or staff? Let's move on to the next item, which is the Distinguished Service Award presentation.
Good afternoon. Mike Tupper with the Marshalltown Police Department. I'd like to ask Officer Chad Hillers, Officer Randy Kessler, and Sergeant Sadie Weekly to join me at the microphone, please. So we're on TV, so we gotta look this way. It feels a little weird. I'm still not used to it after seven years, because I'd rather talk to the folks in the audience. But this is one of the cool parts of my -- cool parts of my job. I have lots of cool parts. This is probably my favorite. We get to recognize three superstar employees, and I'm sure they're all familiar faces to you. They've all been long-term employees here. Officer Hillers out there, the real tall guy, might not be as a familiar face because he's worked some special assignments for us, and he's actually -- looks a lot different from what you've probably seen him in the last few years due to a special assignment. So I just want to take a few minutes to talk about all three of them. So we'll start with Randy Kessler. Randy just finished an 11-plus-year assignment as a detective with the Marshalltown Police Department. And over that time period, he specialized in the areas of computer crimes and the areas of crimes against children. And he was part of a statewide task force that investigated crimes against children involving computers. And Randy really distinguished himself during his service, working those types of cases, many of which ended up being prosecuted federally. Worst of the worst kind of cases, child pornography-type cases, very difficult cases to investigate, important cases to get right. And Randy did a phenomenal job. And I've known Randy now for about seven years, and I've always been very impressed with Randy and the work that he does. And we're very appreciative of his service to our department. Randy, how many years total do you have in?
Total, going on 31.
Thirty-one total years. So that's amazing. So this is just a -- what we're talking about tonight is just a very small piece of his overall career, which has been distinguished overall. I really appreciate Randy's service to our community. And thanks directly to the work that Randy did as a detective, our community is a safer place to live, work, and play. And in addition to computer crimes, if you've ever spent any time with our detectives, period, you'll find out that they're very busy. And Randy's worked a lot of violent crime. If there's been a death investigation, or a murder, or robbery in the last seven years, Randy probably has been involved with that. And he's a very reliable, high-quality professional. And we just are very fortunate to have Randy on our team. Right next to him is Sergeant Sadie Weekly. Those blue stripes on her sleeve are really bright because they're very new, very new. She was just recently promoted. And Sadie, the reason Sadie is being recognized partly tonight is because she was promoted back to patrol, she had to leave her assignment as a detective with the Marshalltown Police Department. And Sadie worked nine-plus years as a detective with the department, and she specialized in the area of domestic violence, family violence, sexual assault crimes. And you see me frequently talk about those crimes in my weekly reports or here at meetings like this, something that I'm very passionate about, and Sadie is very passionate about. And she's done a phenomenal job. In fact, she's done such a good job in these areas that she's distinguished herself across the state. Her peers recognize her as an expert in her field, and she now helps teach new police officers at the law enforcement academy how to investigate sexual assault and domestic violence crimes. That's awesome for us. We have an expert here, and Randy's an expert as well. And we've just been very fortunate to have Sadie on our team as well. How many years Sadie, total?
Eleven years.
Eleven, eleven total. And you've worked as a dispatcher in Tama County part-time and came to us with law enforcement experience, superstar employee, superstar. And then right next to her is Chad Hillers. And Chad just recently completed a six-plus-year assignment working in investigations, and he specialized in drug crimes. And Chad, like Randy and Sadie, is also an expert in his field. Chad also serves our department as a tactical officer, a training officer, a firearms instructor. How many total years, Chad?
Twelve.
Twelve total years for Chad. He does a phenomenal job as well. And the thing about, as I stated with Randy, for Sadie and Chad and their assignments that they just left, they made a significant impact on the safety of our community. Chad was involved with several high-profile drug investigations that made a significant impact on the safety of our community. And without folks like this, we would be in big trouble, okay? They're the ones that deserve all the credit. They do all the hard work. And the good news is, this is just three of them. We have 40 just like them working next door that all do a phenomenal job as well. But I wanted to, since they just completed these specialized assignments, these are difficult assignments, difficult on them personally, takes a lot of time and effort, but it's also difficult on their family and friends, too, because it takes them away from family and friends frequently. And so I wanted to take the time to thank them all for the phenomenal work that they do. They've distinguished themselves professionally, and they've made me very proud. And they're a credit to you all in the city of Marshalltown. So on behalf of the Marshalltown Police Department, I have distinguished service awards for all three of them, and I just want to say congratulations.
(applause)
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
Coffee with the cops this morning was at Orpheum Theater, and that's where my small little group gets together and has coffee every day. So we got to meet six or eight more of these really outstanding people this morning, and we got a lot to be proud of, a lot to be proud of.
Thank you. I just love that endeavor. It really reaches out into the community, and it was coffee and hot dogs, as I understand it today.
I think this morning was pancakes.
Oh, and I came this afternoon and was offered a hot dog as well.
You got a hot dog this afternoon?
Around noon time, yeah.
My, I think they didn't expect us all there. There's 12 or 14 in my coffee group, and they walked in. I don't think they expected to see that many people, but it was a lot of fun, and we got a lot of good, really good information.
Right.
Good people.
Yeah. We really do have a good force, and I love what the chief does with the outreach. That's good for our town. Unless there are other comments or questions, let's go on to item F, which is the consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, Madam Secretary, would you be so kind as to read those items for us?
Yes, Your Honor. Approve the council meeting minutes of June 25. Approve bill list in the amount of $2,994,718.21. Received the building permit report for May and June. Resolution approving 28E agreement between the city and Iowa Department of Inspection and Appeals, with the agreement expiring August 22, 2019. And that's the end of it.
Thank you. Time for item G then on reports. First one is the Coliseum update.
Yeah, today we have with us Damon Spillman from GTG Architects to provide an update on where we are on our development of plans and specifications. And I was able to just pull up your --
The feasibility study? Yeah, so I'm Damon Spillman with GTG Architects out of Johnston, Iowa, as Jessica said. And I was going to give you a quick update on the Coliseum. We met with the Coliseum Commission before this meeting to discuss the plans. I do have the plans with me, but we don't want to thumb through a bunch of plans in detail, so. So when we met, I think at the end of January at the council meeting, it was to go ahead and with, to move forward with the feasibility study. We talked about funding, I think, at the last, at that January meeting. So we've been proceeding with the feasibility study, just pretty much adding detail and clarifying things from that model. So what we're working on now is finalizing those plans and with the discussion with the commission, trying to wrap those up by 9:15 to, I think, stay within the budget year. So that would be the plan specifications and a kind of a cost-budget estimate for the project. The other things we're working on is to get the environmental engineering firm in line to do the Phase One study for the Coliseum, to test for asbestos, lead-based paint, air quality issues. And then also working with the White Group and an energy consultant that they work with the utilities to get rebates in terms of putting things into the design, in terms of R-values of roof, windows, and then mechanical systems. So we're in the process of now just trying to select a bundle to move forward with on that. And that's really, that's all I have. If anyone has any questions.
Does the council have any questions?
Can I ask, is the document that's up there, is that the previous plan, or is it a new document? I noticed there wasn't a link on the, on, in the agenda.
Right. This is the feasibility study.
Okay.
Well, you're trying to get the drawings transferred, but again, it would have, it starts to take a lot of time to work through those. But what you see in the feasibility study minus, or plus some changes we talked about before this meeting with the commission, is pretty much, that's the plan, so.
Yep. That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Does the current design that we're looking at or moving towards, have the balcony and stage removed, or still there?
Right now, it hasn't removed. So that was when we met with the historic preservation people in January, December. Not to get too far back, but in order to, for some of those incentives, it was, it needed to keep the balcony, keep the stage, pretty much keep the building as is in order to get the tax, or the historic credits. But from the discussion with the feasibility study and moving forward, that didn't really fit the programming of what the need was for the building in order for increased programming. The balcony and the stage really hindered the additional sports courts that they wanted in there. And then also in some of the other spaces, maximizing the space for flexible meeting rooms, exercise rooms. So currently, they are not part of the, this feasibility study or the design.
Thank you. Other questions, comments from the public? Yes, sir. You have to come up and speak in the microphone because we televise this, and otherwise people can't hear you.
So if music artists come --
And your name is, I'm sorry?
My name is Brandon Goken.
And your address?
311 Nevada Street, over by Quick Star.
Okay, go for it.
My question is, removing the balcony, where would, I was just wondering if we had any ideas where musicians that would come to this town would go?
I'm not sure the architect is able to address that, but I know that when we had the rumbles here, when we did the fundraiser for lighting the courthouse, they were on the stage, I think, as an area where they could perform, and did.
To speak a little bit, like with the feasibility study, it presented lots of different options. Portable stages are something that are widely used at this point, and that was the intention, was to have a portable stage available at the facility for anybody who would need that type of equipment for whatever event was going to happen. And so then the, I believe, one of the scenarios was showing that you could seat up to 1,000 people with a portable stage in the redesigned Coliseum.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment or question? Thanks for the report. Very good. On to item number, or letter H, resolutions. The first one, Madam Secretary, would you read that one?
Resolution supporting the city's Housing and Community Development Department to apply for the Lead-Based Paint Hazard Reduction Program grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Shels Bonheimer, Housing Community Development Director. Well, as you know, in the past, we have been a successful grantee for lead hazard control grants. We've completed five grants since 2003 was when we first started. The notice of funding availability was recently released to apply for another round of funding. The application will be due August 2, and they're expecting to award about 50 awards nationwide, so it is still a very competitive process, with maximum award amount for communities of our size, about 3.6 million. So larger communities can actually get up to 4.1 million, with a three-and-a-half-year term on that grant, where it used to be three years in the past. So they've had a few changes with some of those type of things. And we are working and hoping to reapply with council's support. We would look at probably around two-and-a-half to $3 million application, not going for that full amount. We're trying to be reasonable with what we think we can obtain and do in that time period, and what matching funds we feel like we're able to get with that funding. As far as match goes, there is a requirement of a 10% match to the federal share of funds that you apply for. So we're looking at somewhere between $250,000 to $300,000 in match. The way we achieve that match is through in-kind value that we already have through the city. So we use some of the time from our Human Resources Director, our legal counsel, Finance Department, which are already operating and doing many of the things that are associated with daily activities. So we basically portion out a portion of their time that's associated with staff management, for example, under Human Resources. With the Finance Department, we actually have done kind of a combination deal where the grant pays for a portion of the time and expenses, and then part of it is in-kind match. So there's some grant revenue that goes into the Finance Department General Fund to help offset some of that added extra work. The staff for the grant, a portion of my time, our program manager, our administrative assistant, inspectors, that's all paid fully by the grant funds. So their wages, benefits, everything are fully paid by the grant funds. All the work is paid by the grant funds. So there's not any additional funds that are requested out of the city dollars to budget. It's, as I mentioned, it's time that's already being spent and allocated as full-time employees within the city already. So our hope, and then a big portion also is in-kind rental of space. So the fact that we have offices here for those staff to use, we put a dollar value as basically a monthly rent for those expenses. So that counts as an in-kind. In the past, we have used the safe houses, what we call the safe houses, the two houses that the Friends of the Library has. With that situation changing and that not being available, we'll be looking at some different relocation options, probably actually not relocating families and kind of having that housing situation, but more of a stipend that would be paid out of grand dollars. So we wouldn't have houses to manage, pay utilities, furnish, things of that nature. So that's going to be a bit of a change. But we are estimating still to do about 130 units. We're proposing only in Marshalltown, where in the past we have been regional, but we're proposing just Marshalltown only. And part of that's in our numbers, as we're looking at point valuations for the scoring. We take into consideration those different aspects of where do we think we're the most competitive, and also where is our time best spent? We look at past history and participation, and what communities. We did, we did survey the other communities for interest. We didn't get a whole lot of positive responses for interest, and so that's why we felt it was better suited for us to focus our efforts just within our incorporated city this time around. So with that, I would entertain any questions that you have, but otherwise, for the most part, very similar in nature to what we have run in the past. We would work on both owner-occupied, rental-occupied, contract-sale properties would be anticipated. Again, about 130 homes, housing units over about a three-and-a-half-year period. In the past, our averages for improvements were around 14,000 per unit.
Consuls, Weren and Coop have been hanging around this dais longer than I have, but even I know just how many millions of dollars you've been able to get in grants to fix up homes that make them safer for children in Marshalltown, so I can't imagine anybody not liking this idea, Michelle.
We've had over $12 million through these grant funds, so.
Well, let me call for a motion to approve the resolution.
I move for approval. I second.
Any discussion? Any questions? Public comment?
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Oh, public comment?
That's all right. Go ahead and call a roll.
Sorry. I have a plug here, I think. Gowdy?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, then thanks for your good work in grant writing for these years. Let's go to number two, please.
Resolution approving in agreement with Bolton and Mink for the completion of a self-evaluation and transition plan as required by the Americans with Disabilities Act.
This is something that I had mentioned to you that we were pursuing, that I put out a request for proposal for. Those were due at the end of June. We ultimately received two compliant responses, and after the review of those two responses, one being from the WT Group and the other being from Bolton and Mink, Bolton and Mink was higher on the base fee, but when it came down to the alternate number one of including citywide sidewalk assessment, that was where there was a significant price difference. And ultimately, looking at the time it takes, knowing that they're going to be visiting curb ramps as well, that it made sense to include that alternate number one to get us all the information we need to be able to pursue sidewalk improvements, ordering sidewalk improvements throughout the city. And so you'll notice that the contract amount that is before you tonight is 121,000, which doesn't quite get the base fee and the alternate to add up. We did ask them to remove some items related to their proposed public engagement plan, which brought the price down a little bit. $121,000, I realize, just as you do, is a significant amount of money. The way that this is really proposed to be done is over two fiscal years. And so what I'm recommending is that we utilize local option sales tax council designated to pay for this over two fiscal years. As you'll recall, as we did the budget for the fiscal year that just started on July 1, there was $682,000 of local option sales tax budgeted for you all to designate, and we did not designate all of that. There's almost 500,000 that wasn't designated. So I'm recommending that that 60,500 be designated from this year's budget, and then as we prepare for our budget for next fiscal year, then we would include this as an approved item in the next budget for the remainder of that contract amount.
Should we call for a motion to approve the resolution first?
I so move.
Second.
Discussion?
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
An important step, base step, if you will, with the ADA compliance and so on, especially citing the fact that we hadn't done one before. This is, should precede any sidewalk improvements according to the ADA. So I'm in supportive of this, and I especially like the financing over two years. I think it's a good plan, and we should move ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any other comments or questions by the consuls? Any by the public? Yes, ma'am.
Anna Wolvers, 213 Thomas Drive. I know we've worked with Bolton and Mink in the past, so that gives us a good reputation for the Park Master Improvement Plan. I just would hope with 121,000 for that survey that it's actually followed. I know we paid 56,000 for the park and rec, and I haven't heard any discussion on the number-one priority, which was to improve the maintenance of our current parks. And right now, there's a lot of discussion on the trails and sidewalks and stuff, so that's not really improving the parks and addressing the ADA compliance within parks and stuff, too.
Thank you. Other comments? Roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Thank you. Carrie, would you read item number three for us, please, Madam Clerk?
Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the purchase of two Ford Interceptor Police Package vehicles from Jensen Ford for the price of $62,060 for use in the police department as emergency response vehicles, and declaring certain property, surplus property, and authorizing sale and disposal thereof to Jensen Ford, a 2014 Chevrolet Tahoe and a 2014 Dodge Charger.
Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Chief?
Hello again. So I got to do one of my favorite things. Now I get to do one of my least favorite things, talk to you about cars. So it's that time of year, again, to talk to you about enhancing our marked police vehicle fleet. And we went out to, we've had, first of all, I want to say, we've had excellent success with the Ford Explorer. And it's been good on maintenance, it's been good for operations. We've tried a lot of different cars in the seven years that I've been here. This car seems to be the, or this vehicle seems to be the one that meets our needs the best. So we went out to some Ford dealers looking for bids, and the only two responses we received was from Stivers, which has the state bid, and from our local Ford dealership, Jensen. And so every year about this time, we look at our fleet and what needs to be recycled out, and the, in the --
And we went out to, we've had, first of all, I want to say, we've had excellent success with the Ford Explorer. And it's been good on maintenance, it's been good for operations. We've tried a lot of different cars in the seven years that I've been here. This car seems to be the, or this vehicle seems to be the one that meets our needs the best. So we went out to some Ford dealers looking for bids, and the only two responses we received was from Stivers, which has the state bid, and from our local Ford dealership, Jensen. And so every year about this time, we look at our fleet and what needs to be recycled out. And in the memo in your packet, we identified a 2014 Chevy Tahoe and a 2014 Dodge Charger that need to be replaced. Maintenance is becoming a concern for both those vehicles, and they've just probably lived their usefulness for us in terms of being emergency response vehicles. And so we took those vehicles to the vendors that were submitting bids and sought trade value for them, and that's detailed in the memo. At the end of the day, Jensen Ford gave us the best response to our request for quotes. They met the state bid for the Ford Explorer, first of all, which is $36,150. That was what Stivers was offering for new Ford Explorers. But then Jensen brought that down even further and gave us another discount of about $5,000 per car. So their quote was for $31,030 for a 2019 Ford Explorer, bringing the total cost to 62 for two vehicles, $62,000 and some change. So, and then with the trade value, they're giving us $24,000 for the two vehicles. So the final purchase price is 38,000 and some change for two brand-new police vehicles. Now, that doesn't cost, or doesn't include the cost to insert all of our emergency equipment and to put decals on and stuff like that, but this is a very good price for two cars. And the other thing about these SUVs that we've been purchasing is they hold good trade values. So we believe at the end of the life of these vehicles, we'll get good trade value on them when it comes time to replace them. So staff recommendation is to accept the Jensen quote and to move forward with the purchase of two new 2019 Ford Explorer police vehicles. Be happy to answer any questions.
We're looking at a parking ticket person to be hired somewhere in the near future. Would one of these cars work for that person, or do you have something else in mind?
I have a different plan in mind. We have a total of $120,000 for vehicles in the Police Department fleet for this fiscal year. So this really just puts kind of a small dent into that. And we'll be looking at a detective vehicle later this year, but I think that this will be also an opportunity that we can maybe buy a used utility-type pickup truck that could be used for the parking enforcement person. But we would also get a lot of use out of that in the Police Department because we're always hauling bikes or other things, and we have a need for a small utility-type vehicle. So I don't have a final answer, but I don't think the vehicles that we're trading, I think they're more valuable to us trading them, and we can find a different vehicle later for parking enforcement.
Any other questions or comments? From the public? Roll call. Thank you.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Thank you. Carried, Madam Clerk, please read the last and fourth resolution.
Resolution approving the purchase of a 2019 Dodge pickup from McGrath Dodge for the Fire Department.
Good evening. David Reardon, Marshalltown Fire Department. So in your packet, you should have a memo detailing what the project is. We're going to be replacing a 2003 Dodge Dakota regular cab pickup truck. That vehicle currently has some extensive rust damage to the body and to the rear bumper. Kelly Blue Book value on the vehicle was between 1300 and 1500, and that was in fair condition. Repairs to the vehicle are going to be just under 4,800 on top of the nearly $1,000 I've spent for brakes and front-end alignments and shocks. CIP for 20, for this current fiscal year, had a purchase of a pickup truck after consulting the state bid packet, looking between Dodge and Chevy and Ford. The Dodge was the least expensive vehicle. Once that was determined, then we sent out RFPs to Stu Hanson, who has the current state bid, Dave Wright Dodge here in town, and to McGrath Dodge in Cedar Rapids. Our local dealer, Dave Wright, was non-responsive to the request. Stu Hanson put a bid in. Their current state bid was 26,935, and McGrath came back with a price of 26,885, which was $50 under the state bid. Based on that, our staff would make the recommendation that we accept the bid from McGrath Dodge in the amount of 26,885. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is that with or without a trade?
That is without a trade. Due to the condition of the vehicle, once we get the vehicle in, I would come back and have it declared surplus and go through GOV deals or some form like that to sell it outright.
Sounds like it may be going to garbage.
Well, if you're in the market for a rusty Dodge pickup, I can help you.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Carried, move along to item I, ordinances. Would you read the first one, please, Madam Secretary?
Ordinance amending Chapter 26 Streets and Sidewalks, Article 3 Sidewalks by repealing current language and adopting new language, third reading.
Is there a motion to approve that ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I still have a problem with setting the grade. It doesn't say whether it's the front or the back of the sidewalk. I think that ought to be, if we're going to set the grade at the same level as the back of the curb, it better be the front of the sidewalk where we're setting the grade at, so it goes up from there.
I think if you read the language, it states that it should be a quarter inch greater than the elevation of the curb for every foot that it sits back off the curb.
Yeah, but it does say that the sidewalk grade shall be equal to the top of the grade of the curb.
Or one-quarter inch above for every foot.
That isn't what mine says. So maybe I got an old copy.
I might suggest the two of you compare notes.
Good idea.
Read elevations right below grade. I think it says what the engineers say.
Thank you.
Go. Don't wait on me.
Okay. Seeing no public comment, let's call the roll on this one.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Carried, five-two.
Thank you. Would you read the item number two under ordinances, please, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance providing for the Division of Taxes levied on taxable property in Amendment Number Seven to the Urban Renewal Plan for Marshalltown Urban Renewal Area Number Three pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa, third reading.
I'd either entertain a motion to approve it or a staff comment.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Public discussion. Roll call, please.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Carried.
Thank you. That takes us to item letter J, discussion number one, is review of sidewalk gap project list.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will say that the agenda actually has two different items on there. As I mentioned this morning, Councilmember Hoop brought it to my attention that, for some reason, there was an error that we kept getting with the original item that came out on Friday. So it's the, item 1-1 is actually the document that does open up to the memo that I did place at your desk tonight. As we've come back, back and forth on the sidewalks and talking about where we go in terms of the gaps that have been identified, both back in 2008 and more recently, we were able to put together a prioritization of which I think I have the first five years here to kind of go through. But I'll go through these here real quick, and I did pull some maps. My lines are not perfect, so please do not hold the lines on the maps to be exact. So the first sidewalk project that we're recommending proceed, and probably recommending proceed sooner rather than later, is one that I've just kind of titled, the Fisher-Governor Road/Fareground Project. This is actually 12th Avenue, South 12th Avenue, from Anson Street to Olive Street, and then continuing south to the south property line of the Fisher-Governor Road Plant, which you can't see the bottom of that here. But then also continuing on East Olive Street to South 17th Street. There is a halfway house that is out there in that area, and I'm sure many of us have seen a number of pedestrians walking precariously on the shoulder of 12th Avenue or on nonexistent sidewalk, or even in the roadway on Olive Street. This is actually one that had been previously designed by the Engineering Division. I think it was probably close to 10 years ago that that was designed. There would need to be some updating. There were easements that were needed, both temporary and permanent for that project, but those could be fairly quickly updated to basically have this project proceed if desired. Why this one is basically, number one, is the number, it had the highest number of non-motorist crashes in the last 10 years of any of the gap projects that we were talking about. So not only is this a gap project, this is a safety project as well. The estimated cost is $856,000. That is clearly at a dollar threshold where we would need to borrow that. We don't have the cash on hand to finance a project of that size. And so as we talk about needing to, talk about whether we're going to be borrowing anything here in late 2018 for projects in 2019, this is certainly one that I would like to keep on your list. If we were to borrow for it and have those funds here at the end of the calendar year 2018, and assuming engineering and easement processes go well, this could easily be put out to bid for completion in 2019 and be part of this fiscal year.
Would you define non-motorist?
Yeah.
Crash?
It's basically pedestrian or a bicyclist being involved with a vehicle. So, yes.
Thank you.
And there was, the last page was a map. It's very tiny on what was, what I was able to print out, but I did highlight the sidewalk projects in question, and you can see the number of dots throughout our community. So there are certainly areas where there is, there are far more serious incidents than what we've had here in this stretch, but those are not areas where there's a sidewalk issue at this point. So that means there needs to be another sort of engineering solution applied to those potential areas.
One comment to make as to reason it was stopped last time is because it was going to be financed totally with TIF money, and some of the property along this stretch does not meet the requirements of a TIF project. So I would hope that if we do this project, that you would make sure that those properties, we don't use TIF money in front of those properties, that we use cash, because if not, you'll be in violation of the state law.
Things have changed since that time, and actually, this was something that you did just a little while ago, was to update the urban renewal plan for this area, which is basically 12th Avenue to the east, not anything to the west. And so what you can do now to utilize tax increment financing for public improvement projects is to basically state that you're, that's your intent for a project. We did state that as our intent for this area. However, this is, it's a repayment option at this point. This is something we would need to borrow for, where you're going to then be repaying, and that's a choice to repay with TIF or a choice to repay with, you know, basically our debt service tax levy. But I don't want that to cloud the judgment that this is a very high-priority project because of the non-motorist crashes in relation to the other gap projects that we're talking about. And so if you would like this to proceed, how we repay that is a conversation that we have later on.
The conversation needs to be had upfront because that's what stopped the project last time. And I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying that as a council member, I would have a real tough time using TIF money to pay for, for areas to be improved when those areas don't meet the requirements of a TIFT area, which says that once the improvement is done, that the increased value of that property will pay us back the cost of the money from the TIFT. And if we can't prove that, I think you're going out on a limb. I know you can, we can pass rules and all that, but let's, this was one of the items that they looked at at the State House when they were talking about the TIF program a couple of years ago. So I want us to be really careful because people are watching.
Yes, certainly, anything with TIF use, but we have done everything that we need to do to be able to use tax increment financing as a repayment source for a loan to complete this project.
We should be able to do it without TIF, though.
And that's one of, one of the options that, you know, there's two repayment options, and that's where I didn't want to talk about the repayment options because I think that overshadows the importance of the project. And this is a very important project, which is why it is placed as number one here on the priority before you. Any other questions on this one?
Any public comment? Yes, sir. Whoever gets there first.
I noticed the sidewalks are across the street from Casey's. Am I correct?
They would be on the east side of the street, the same side of the street as Casey's.
All right.
And for those who just tuned in, Brandon, they probably won't know your name and address if you don't.
Brandon Goken, 311 Noreta Street, Apartment 1. My other comment, would if these extend across streets, is there plans for sidewalk crossings being implemented?
Yes, that is, if we're connecting sidewalk to sidewalk across the street, that we will have to put in the bubbles, basically, that I can't think of what they're called, but basically are ADA requirements, and then paint crosswalks as well.
Thank you.
Linda Clark, I live at 306 South Second Avenue, and at the last council meeting, I spoke, and I had reservation with the council passing and agreeing to change the ordinance in, you know, as it regarded to who was responsible to be paying for these sidewalks. You answered the question that this will be the east side there on 12th Avenue. I wondered if it was going to be west side because there are private properties, individual properties, and just as Mr. Lamer said, people are watching this issue. You have, as council, passed three times now to change the ordinance to make it the property owner's responsibility to be paying for the sidewalks. And so I had reservation, I have, still do. I feel that there needs to be grandfather clause for older existing sidewalks that we do have, and there are a number of areas in town that have no sidewalks. And if I am understanding correctly, the council has already voted three times to pass to make it the property owner's responsibility to pay for the sidewalks, where before it was the state saying that it was the city's responsibility. So I still have reservation, and I want to stand on what I said last time. There needs to be some more looking on some of these things. It's not fair. And like Mr. Lamer said, people are watching this issue. Thank you.
So a point of clarification here, basically, the only way to force somebody to put in a new sidewalk where there is not existing ordinance language or planning or other ordinances related to subdivisions that would require it is for you all to agree to do special assessments of the property so that the property owner would pay for it. And so what is being proposed with all of these gaps is that the city would be paying for this. Those sidewalks then ultimately do become the property of the property owner, and they have the liability for taking care of those sidewalks in the future. But just to be clear, at this point with these gaps, I'm not proposing a special assessment project. You basically all have to be on board with that, and that is sometimes a very difficult thing to get everybody on the same page because there is a very high threshold for passing a special assessment. So just a point of clarification there.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Anna Wolvers, 213 Thomas Drive. I agree with you, and when I moved to Marshalltown 12 years ago, I'm not in this zone, but I purposely brought a corner lot that doesn't have sidewalks. Because as a single female, I don't want to deal with, you know, s- I don't want to deal with, you know, clearing snow removal on a corner lot. So, I'm sure there's a lot of residents that would be in that same boat, that bought their property as is without sidewalk, maybe older and can't handle snow removal and the cost of that. So, before you force that on people, I think if you're trying to entice people to come and stay and make Marshalltown home, that's not going to help that aspect anyway.
Hi, Wendy Riesinger, 507 Woodbury Street, Marshalltown. With that going down along 12th Avenue to Olive Street, part of that property is owned by county. Should not the county pay for that portion of the sidewalk? I believe Casey's have put in their sidewalk due to their remodeling, but I'm concerned about the fairgrounds having to pay for their portion.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. I just want to point out that if we pay for it with TIF money, it's basically kind of everybody's paying for this, because TIF is a, takes tax money out of everybody's pockets. And so, we've got everybody in the city paying for sidewalks on some private property. Also, I'm interested, because the Amendment Number 5 of this TIF district says that sidewalks and trail project is about a $2 million project, and you haven't got $1 million in there, and I'm wondering where the $2 million, the other million is, and is it going to be a trail built too, or can we have a multi-purpose solution?
The urban renewal plan, those were projects where we set dollar thresholds at a not-to-exceed amount and for a certain time period. So, this is the project that is contemplated, but that having additional authority would not rule out any future projects in that entire east side industrial urban renewal area. However, the, this one is the only one that's contemplated at this point.
Other comment? Let's go to discussion item number J2 then, on the second quarter strategic plan.
Actually, no, there's more. There's a whole prioritization that we'd like to go through, so there's, I've got a few more slides here.
I was getting hungry.
So, what we're recommending for year two, which I've put here as fiscal year 2020, but really, that's ultimately up to you as to when that, when that comes through, is basically getting more into what you had identified as one of the priorities that you would like, which is surrounding schools. And so, we have around Fisher Elementary about $150,000 worth of improvements, where you can see from the map that there are some existing sidewalks on the other sides of the street, but allowing kids to basically cross the street to areas where parents are parked and be able to get into parked vehicles while walking on a sidewalk is a little bit safer. And so, I didn't know if there's any questions on that one. Also, in year two, the, the area, we're just calling it generally South Ridge, which is basically between Sixth Street and Center Street, a few different areas where there are some sidewalk gaps. As you can see on the north side of the street, there just is a block without sidewalk between Sixth and Wakanda Road, and then same on the south side of the street, same connecting block that doesn't have sidewalk, but the, the other blocks to the east have sidewalk. And then, there's one property on Wakanda Road at the corner of Wakanda and South Six, which is missing a sidewalk, which would then connect into the sidewalk to be added. And then, it was noted by one of our public comments that all the way over by Pizza Ranch, going up the hill there, there is not a sidewalk there presently. And so, that would then connect into existing sidewalk. We have a transit stop there. It's just one that makes a lot of sense. I will also note that this one had the second highest of non-motorist incidents, which was just only one, but there was a non-motorist incident at Wakanda and South Ridge. And so, this was an estimated cost of $191,000, but was also of pretty high importance, and also recommending it be part of that year two or second highest priority project. Any questions on this one? Okay. And then, the final sort of year two second priority again relates to an elementary school. Anson Elementary, South Street is a big, a major street that that is located, Anson Elementary is actually located at Third Avenue and South Street. There are sidewalks from Third Avenue to Seventh Avenue, but once you hit Third Avenue or Seventh Avenue, there are no sidewalks to get you between Seventh Avenue and 12th Avenue. And so, as mentioned previously with the first high priority project, there would then be a sidewalk on 12th Avenue to connect to. So, that's also, again, why this would be recommended as sort of the second grouping of projects. All three of those projects together is about $550,000, which again, to, to try and help save on mobilization fees and complete as much work as possible, we'd again recommend borrowing for that as part of a planned borrowing and then repayment on the general obligation tax levy.
Council or questions, comments, public comment? Ready for J2?
No, there's still more. So, that's, if I can get my mouse to work here.
Getting hungry, too. If you're watching, Sharon, turn the heat down on the stove. Not like she's ever watched.
Okay. Year three is another school safety project, and it has a fairly large price tag associated with it as well of $702,000, which is why we recommended separating that one out from the others. There are a lot of gaps that exist in the neighborhood around Hoagland Elementary on Thunderbird Drive. Again, don't mind my, my lines. Also, Newcastle Road and Fifth Avenue. And so, this, this would basically connect all of those gaps and provide more sidewalks in that neighborhood. If there's no questions, I'll go on to what's proposed in, in project year four, which would be, again, addressing some existing gaps between sidewalks. This is one that I know quite a few of you are familiar with, 1501 South Seventh Avenue. There's literally two sidewalks and then a blank, estimated cost of $27,000. The same also happens up near the 13th Street District on Fremont Street, 1204 Fremont Street. It was actually the owner of, of that property that submitted this, I believe, and his comment was that he continually gets notices from the city or complaints about not shoveling his sidewalk, because there's shoveled sidewalk and then nothing, but there's actually no sidewalk there to be shoveled. So, that was one of the ways that he was looking at that as being a positive, if this is a gap to be filled. This one is estimated at $11,000. And then, South Center Street, this one's a little bit of a tricky issue due to some, just a sort of a lack of right-of-way per se, or some weird elevations and hillside. The sidewalk kind of by Five Star Real Estate Bickford Cottage ends up going down and around. However, if you've driven by in the wintertime, what you often see in this, in the, up near the road, Center Street, is footprints, people walking through the snow, because that's the quickest point from A to B. And so, ultimately, there is no sidewalk then that continues up to Bowen Street, and so, this is an estimated cost of $145,000, which would fill a gap along what is a major corridor in our city.
From Pinnacle Bank, it goes north and down over the hill. Then it just dead-ends?
I think it comes back around, but it's just, it, it tries to avoid the steep elevations that are there between Center Street and then what's, what's down at the bottom of the hill. So, it does come back around, but it's not, if it's the middle of winter and you're walking, it's not the shortest point from A to B.
Public comment?
Anna Wolvers, again, just quick question. Would all of these gaps then coincide with the Molten and ADA compliant things? Because they would all have to be compliant when they're installed, so would that kind of all close in altogether?
With the city installing them, we would be complying with ADA compliance when they are installed, and so, they would be installed in a compliant way. And then, as long as the maintenance prevented, I mean, as long as with regular maintenance or time, there weren't anything that caused them to be out of compliance, like heaving and other things, then there wouldn't be any immediate issues.
But wouldn't all these gaps come up in their survey that we're paying?
No, they're just assessing as existing sidewalk condition.
Okay. I thought maybe they would, you know, closing those gaps would help coincide hand in hand.
Unfortunately, it doesn't on this one. And then, I think that's the end of the show. So, I did have, you know, this is for discussion, but again, there's, there's really a question here before you tonight related to that first project of that Fisher Governor Road project, and ultimately, that if you are ready to do this, that we, we would like to see a motion to move forward with this project in the current fiscal year, and then we would adapt the rest of the proposed projects into the capital improvement plan for the, the coming budgeted year, which we would do during the budget process.
I would have one more question on that project, and that is, has anybody talked to the fairgrounds? Because I don't think they have staff on duty during the winter, and if we pave on two sides of them, who's going to shovel that?
Here's, here's what I would take it back to, is there is a safety issue here. Ultimately, no matter where sidewalks are.
That isn't what I ask. I ask, has anybody talked to the?
We have not talked to anybody at the fairgrounds.
I would recommend we do that.
We have not talked to any owners along properties with this. Ultimately, that's something that I feel we need more direction, that you actually want to move forward before we would start that conversation. But again, I'll go back to, there is a safety issue here, which is not just anecdotal at this point. There's evidence to back that up, and there's, there's reasons to do this project.
Those property owners were all talked to eight years ago.
Really?
Yes.
What the county?
And the assessments were all done. Everything was done. It just got held up.
Did the county, was the county okay with it?
Yes.
The Fair Board?
At the time, yes. Everybody was okay with it.
Okay. Thanks.
Brandon Goken, 311 Nevada Street, Apartment 1. I agree with what Leon is saying, with there not being anybody possibly at the fairground during the winter. I had a comment to that, maybe even proposing that we add jobs to where the sidewalks that cannot be sidewalked during the winter, because there's no people there, maybe create a job of like some sort of machinery to do those sidewalks like we do the roads. Thank you.
Mr. Martin, were you trying to?
Yes, yes. I'd like to underscore the importance of this. It's a public safety issue. They're not only pedestrian traffic, it's very regular and all hours of the day and night, but also bicycle traffic. That southeast quarter of, of the city, which is Forest Ward, gets different type of traffic, and there's, the access is really not there, not appropriate anyway. But bikes use it, people use it, and there's a lot of walkers trying to get to the park there on Timber Creek. So, I'm supportive of it. I'm certainly cognizant of the cost, but I think we need to move ahead.
I also have a comment, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree in that, yes, these are high safety issues. I do take, I have some very mixed feelings about, for example, the spot on Fremont Street that is in a residence, it directly is on a residence spot. Do we have some criteria that is determining, is it just the priority that we're setting on these high-impact areas when we're asked, when we are paying for this rather than having the homeowner provide the sidewalk in that area?
So, realistically, we can't do anything to force the homeowner unless we were to do a special assessment project. And so, that's where it really comes into, do you want the gap filled? And so, it truly is a gap. It fits the meaning of everything that we've been talking about in sidewalk gaps, and that there is, there is nothing there, but there is something on either side. And so, that was really what I took into consideration when, when putting that one as a priority. The dollar amount on it made it easier to sort of group together with some other projects to make those happen probably sooner rather than later in terms of how that came into the priority. But the, the hard part on this is where there aren't existing sidewalks, unless we have, you know, a subdivision ordinance or something else to go back to, we really can't force that owner, or that owner to put in the sidewalk.
Thank you.
Other council comments or public comment?
My sense would be that unless somebody objects, you should sense in the, some direction to address the most serious of these as a safety issue, as staff.
I guess the, the easier way to do that would be just a motion to include this project in our calendar year 2018 borrowing.
I so move, Your Honor. I will second.
Further discussion about the motion? Roll call.
The motion wants to include the borrowing in the 2018 capital improvement plan?
Calendar year 2018 borrowing.
Calendar year borrowing. Martin?
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Carry it. Thank you. Discussion item number two on the second quarter strategic plan update.
Yes, we are there now. With that, I, I will just be very brief. What I included in the packet was, you know, progress that we've made towards our different goals with different actions and things that have occurred in the last quarter. I won't go through those verbatim. I also included, you know, we had this sort of implementation plan with some deadlines and assigned departments and things, and overall, we are very much on track. There were two, three items actually, that we were very much not on track with. The library board is doing some strategic planning, so there was no need to have a meeting to discuss a facility expansion with them at this point. The other was talking about an economic development philosophy or values or beliefs. That is one that I do, I will have ready to go for the July 23rd agenda, and the other is railroad crossing safety improvements, which will likely happen sometime in August as well. So, please know that we're on track, and if you do ever have any questions about the strategic plan and what we're doing, I'd be very happy to, to answer those.
Questions or comments about that? Okay, good. We are at item K, public comment, and rather than repeat the administration at the beginning, just please hark back to that one. Is there anyone who would like to address the session today in public comment? Chief Tupper?
Mike Tupper, Marshawn Police Department. I just wanted to give you a quick fireworks update. Anybody tired of fireworks? Two hands up, okay? I was going to make a couple of jokes about fireworks, but then I read this afternoon a young man in Bremer County died as a result of discharging fireworks over the weekend. So, it's not really funny.
Another garage burned down in Des Moines as well, and a Marshawn couple lost their hometown in Missouri from fireworks.
Yeah, so, since, since June 15th through today at 3:30 PM, these are stats hot off the presses, our police department has responded to 282 fireworks calls. I think it's more than that, because I think 911 has been mislabeling a few of them as noise complaints, but I know that it's 282 fireworks calls for sure. And we've issued 31 citations. So, some will say, well, it doesn't seem like a lot of citations on 282 calls, and I've explained it all to you, but for the, for the public, a lot of the calls that we receive, you know, somebody will call in and say, I live at such and such address, and I hear fireworks. That doesn't narrow it down much for us. And other times, it takes us some time to get there, because fireworks complaints are not a high priority call when we have other emergency calls or high priority calls going on. So, I, I mentioned to you that we've had 282 firework complaints since June 15th. It's also worth noting that we've responded to 2,403 calls for service since June 15th, and that's generally working with five police officers on a patrol shift. So, we're busy. It's summer. It takes us time to get to the fireworks complaints. So, we didn't write any citations last year. We've issued 31 this year, and I am hoping that the fireworks season is over, but we will continue to write citations until it is. Be happy to answer any questions. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Is the season for selling fireworks over? Did it end on Sunday?
I think so, yeah. I think it was July 8th, yesterday.
Yes, thank you, yes.
Yeah, the tents were empty as of yesterday.
Yeah.
Well, good work. You, you've written 31 citations more than the old Des Moines area, which also banned them. And they have a $650 fine down there.
Yeah.
So.
We don't, yeah, we don't really want, I, you know, people, I met with some kids last week at two different schools. And, you know, I say, what do you think I do every day? Arrest people. Well, we try not to, actually. We don't really like to issue citations or arrest people. But it's gotten out of hand. Fireworks gotten out of hand. And so we're issuing citations. So if you're out there watching, if you still have fireworks and, and we catch you, you're going to get a citation.
There are lots of dogs and people with PTSD that appreciate the effort this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
And somebody left a bottle of Raca right in our backyard. As I've been blogging, they've been good for my business. I've defended two people that shot people's eyes out with fireworks. One was the, he was the state wrestling second place from Webster City, lost his right eye. Another was a Drake lost student down in Des Moines. And a Raca went right through his skull, took his left eye out. These, these things are just awful. They're dangerous. And growing up in Spencer, that had the Spencer Fire, I appreciate the fact that we're trying to enforce it around here in Marshawn. Thank you. Any other, Chief, Myers?
Just a quick comment on fireworks. They are dangerous. And just to let you know, the fireworks at the fairgrounds on the 4th, that vendor had a mortar tube explode, which exploded up a whole rack of mortars. So it just goes to show you that even the people that are professionals and do it for a living have accidents. So, and those are the professionals, not the people just shooting them, shooting them in their backyards.
There were over a dozen deaths in a factory down in Mexico this last week as a result of fireworks, too, where they tried to make them. Yeah, they're, they're really dangerous. And people need to realize that. Other public comment? Hearing none, let's declare the, oops. Oh, we have a closed session, that's right. Well, let's declare the public meeting is closed now at 6:43 PM. Thank you for coming. Nice to see people here. And we will need, I entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
I'm second. And that would be closed session pursuant to Section 21.5, subsection 1, paragraph J of the Code of Iowa.
Thank you.